Almighty God, we come to you at this moment to give you thanks for your many blessings. We know that you are the Creator and giver of life, and on this warm spring evening, we are reminded of the beauty and majesty of your creation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in beautiful Frederick County, in this wonderful Commonwealth, and in this great nation where we enjoy the freedoms provided for in our Constitution, including the freedom to assemble here tonight. And Father, we offer special thanks to those who gave their lives to preserve those freedoms. And Father, as we recently held graduation ceremonies for our high schools, we thank you for the dedicated teachers that helped mold and guide the future of our community in the classrooms. We ask that you be with them and their students and their families each day throughout the summer. We ask your blessing upon those gathered here tonight. Guide us all and give us the strength and desire to continue to serve you, our county, our Commonwealth, and our great nation. We ask that you hold before us the vision of your will for us to enlighten our words and our actions during this meeting. In your heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Vice Chairman DeHaven, would you lead us in pledge allegiance?
Stand and face the flag for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda. Mr. Tierney.
Mr. Chairman, we have one change. Mr. Ruddy has received an email from Mr. Ben Montgomery requesting or informing us of their desire to re-withdraw rezoning 0514, which is the CB Ventures rezoning.
Any other changes?
No, sir.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor DeHaven, second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing on all's in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The amended agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Tierney.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we're suggesting Items D, which is the Shenandoah Valley Workforce Development Board Chief Elected Officials Consortium Agreement. Item F, which is a request to schedule a work session between the Board of Supervisors and the school board. And Item H, which is a Human Resources Committee report.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is made by Supervisor Fisher. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on all's in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Citizen comments. Are there any citizens signed up for comments?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Or Supervisor's comments, are there any? Hearing now will move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, May 13, 2015.
Chairman, move for approval, submitted.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on all's in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the regular meeting, May 13, 2015, are approved. The next is the minutes of the regular meeting, May 27, 2015.
Move for approval as submitted, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing on all's in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes of the regular meeting, May 27, 2015, are approved. Next are the committee appointments. Historic Resources Advisory Board, Redbud, are we ready?
No, sir.
All right. Historic Resources Advisory Board, Stonewall, are we ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would move that we appoint Dr. Robert Meadows to the Historic Resources Advisory Board as the representative for Stonewall District.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on all's in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Dr. Meadows is hereby appointed to the Historic Resources Advisory Board. Next is Extension Leadership Council, Redbud, are we ready?
No, sir, since Dr. Meadows has moved out of my district.
Okay. Lord Fairfax, well, it looks like we found him another job. Is it the same fellow?
He had relocated. We weren't aware. He thought he was still in the same districts.
Lord Fairfax, Community College Board, if we have any names yet, I'm unaware of them, so we'll need to start working on that. Board of Zoning Appeals, County Representative, looks like our candidate is willing to continue serving. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to reappoint Whit Wagner. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing on all's in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Whit Wagner is reappointed to the Board of Building Appeals. Conservation Easement Authority, we have three that are willing to continue serving. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that all three be reappointed.
All right. We have a motion to reappoint Elaine Cain, Robert Solenberger, and Charles Triplet to the Conservation Easement Authority. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion? Hearing on all's in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Elaine Cain, Robert Solenberger, and Charles Triplet are hereby appointed to the Conservation Easement Authority. Then we have one other item. You have been polled for volunteer to serve on the Shenandoah Valley Workforce Development Board, and one of you has agreed to do that, Supervisor Ranson, and I muchly appreciate it and would appreciate the Board's endorsement of that.
So move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Lofton, a second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion. Hearing on all's in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, sir. Next is the Millwood Station Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company 21, resolution, two resolutions. Go ahead, Mr. Tierney.
Mr. Chairman, the first item is a resolution that would authorize the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the Economic Development Authority, Millwood Volunteer Fire and Rescue Station, and the county. And this MOU would, or addresses the continued use, operation, and ownership of Millwood Station. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, Mr. Tierney? What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move the resolution authorizing execution of the memorandum of understanding between the county of Frederick, the Frederick County Economic Development Authority, and the Millwood Station Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company 21. Subject to such further amendments as deemed appropriate by the county's legal counsel, be adopted.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on all's in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Resolution is approved. Next, Mr. Tierney.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The next is an application has been submitted to the Virginia Resources Authority for participation in their spring bond sale in order to pay off the current EDA debt obligation on Millwood Fire and Rescue Station. The VRA sale is tentatively scheduled to price on July 28, 2015, and close on August 19, 2015. And this is the final step for the county in the application process, which would be the Board authorizing us to enter this agreement.
Questions? All right. What is the pleasure of the Board? Supervisor DeHaven?
Chairman, I'd move adoption of the resolution, the Board of Supervisors.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing on all's in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Next is a request from the Commissioner to refund for refund. Mr. Tierney.
Bear with me. This is a request for a, from the Commissioner dated May 22, 2015, to authorize the Treasurer to refund RDM Hospitality LLC in the amount of $15,342.14 for business personal property furnishing and equipment taxes in 2013, I'm sorry, 2012, 2013, and 2014. This refund results from the taxpayer initially giving one figure in the 2010 for all personal property of this motel. Upon audit, an adjustment was found to be due, reducing the taxpayer's original figure. The Commissioner verified that documentation and details for the refund met all the requirements pursuant to the provisions of Section 58.1-3981A of the Code of Virginia. 1950 is amended. The county attorney has reviewed and authorized the appropriation as indicated by the Commissioner's memo.
Hearing on all's in favor of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the refund and the corresponding supplemental appropriation.
A motion by Supervisor Hess to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing on all's Supervisor Ranson.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. The refund is approved. All right. Next, we have a recommendation from the county administrator in reference to merit pay percentage for fiscal year 2015, 2016. Go ahead, Mr. Tierney.
Mr. Chairman, you have a memo in your agenda from the county administrator, Ms. Garten, in which she has recommended a 4% salary increase for employees. In her memorandum, she lists her rationale for that. Subsequent to that, and at your desks is an email, which was sent out to the Board members, which contains some additional information that was obtained from the school system in which they have pointed out that the breakout of their 5.5% proposed salary increase is such that 3.1% of that they're attributing to a, an adjustment based on market, and 2.4% is based on a step increase for their employees. That information was not available to Ms. Garten when she sent out her original memo to the Board, so that would be an update to her memorandum. I'd be happy to try and answer her questions.
Okay. Board members, as you know, there were certain aspects of this particular topic that were not concluded in the budget process. So probably to the compliment of Supervisor DeHaven, questions were asked about where are we? And the change of guard made it a little harder to answer this year than usual, so the county administrator has formed a recommendation and brought it to you to bring closure to this matter. So if questions are in order, please ask them.
Is this the time for discussion, or are we going to wait till we get a vote for that?
Well, I think sometimes it's good to ask questions that are not actually a debate of the topic after a motion is made to make sure there's clarity. And so I'd like to leave room for that and then actually operate on discussion of a motion should there be no questions.
Then I will take the point here and say that I believe the information, the updated information that Mr. Tierney has presented certainly is in line with what I have been finding in the locality. And so I would, in deference to Mrs. Garten's recommendation, I would recommend that the county employees receive a 2.4% increase.
Okay. Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
All right. We have a motion to have a 2.4% increase. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
If I may, I can say, and doing a lot of research into this, and again, I appreciate Mrs. Garten's interest in doing this, but like you said, she's new, probably getting some information that needed to be updated. And certainly she lays out a good plan here, but a couple of things that I think need to be addressed in talking Supervisor DeHaven, I think it's imperative that we make this decision tonight because our regional partners need some closure on this so they can move forward. So I have no problem with doing that, but I would like to see us, when we finish this, is somehow make a recommendation that we can send to HR Committee because there are still some questions that have been pointed out in our salary survey, which addresses how do we take care of those employees who are already above their pay scale? How is that addressed? And some other things, so that I think that if in fact this motion goes through at the 2.4%, that we recommend that the HR Committee take up the other items that were addressed in the salary survey so that we can bring some closure to that and move forward. My problem is if we continue to do the things we've always done, we'll get what we've always got. So...
Well, the Chair would be glad to assign to HR, and I think HR would be glad to accept, but we should try to make it as clear as possible what the task is. They can certainly add to it as they see fit, but the only thing I heard specifically was employees who are at or above the top already.
Right. That's one of the issues. And the other thing that was brought up in the survey was that they wanted us, they thought it'd be best if we did a philosophy on how we're going to handle pay raises and salaries in the future, because they said without that philosophy, again, we'll wind up back where we were and have to do another salary survey. So I think it's important that the HR Committee be tasked with developing that philosophy that we can use to move forward. I'd like to see a little more objectivity into how we assign raises to our employees based upon objective data. And I don't think we've been doing it. It's kind of like we're chasing, we're trying to keep up one another between the schools. And I'm not sure that's in the county's veterans just to keep doing that. So I think those two issues are issues that I would like to see addressed.
I heard three.
Three, okay. Those three issues.
How about other Board members? Do you have something you'd like to add to the task of HR?
Well, just to respond to a couple of issues that Supervisor Lofton raised, I think the salary survey that we did was a step towards that policy. And I think we acknowledged, in part to some questions you had in a meeting earlier this year, about also including fringe benefits to make sure that the comparison was overall compensation. So I think that process has started, in fairness to the HR Department and the HR Committee, and we certainly understand that. The question I have, though, is what's, is there a real need to act on this tonight? Or can the pay raise be deferred until after it goes to HR and then to finance?
Well, I think others here could speak to it, but it is a significant issue for the entities that are joint entities, especially those for which we're the fiscal agent for. It kicks in or doesn't kick in a raise for them, and then the other localities don't know what happened. That, I think, is the push. But I'll let others speak to that who are...
That's accurate.
That's what's raised in...
That's the biggest problem. And we're outside of their budget as well.
Jail Board, how many more are there?
Outside agencies, there's half a dozen.
Okay. But is there then general agreement that 2.4 is not too much? Because it would sound to me like if this were referred back to HR and to finance, there is a possibility we could come back with a recommendation for something other than 2.4. But obviously, we've already approved to 2.4. That's our threshold.
If I may...
We're in discussion. Go ahead.
And I agree with Supervisor Hess, and I apologize Supervisor Hess, because we had talked about this earlier. And I was unaware until I talked to Supervisor DeHaven that the outside agencies, especially the regional jail, were dependent upon the decision that we would make earlier. So that's why I've taken a different tact than what he and I talked about. But again, in polling, another input, data input resource that was used in the study, and that's the locality industry, that it appears that 2.4, 2.5 is generally what's out there in the market right now.
And is that in line, then, with, for instance, the regional jail, what their expectations are?
They're just looking for input. When we did this a year ago, outside budget, they didn't get adequate warning back to their elected officials in other jurisdictions. It created a real problem for them. When we were outside the budget, we're outside the budget again. We've opened those channels of communication, but they're sort of waiting. And we've worked out a plan, we think, to address it within the jail board's budget, existing budget, such that we don't end up sending them a bill again. That's the one we really want to avoid. I think we're good, if that was your question.
Now, if you feel like it needs to be venue, the motion to postpone will be accepted. I don't know if it'll be seconded, but if you're inclined to go in that direction.
No, I think there's some instructions to the HR Committee to continue to review the subject and evaluate it. And obviously, we will have established a threshold, a lower limit, but in terms of the increase. But if it turns out that it's appropriate to recommend something else, obviously, that would be forthcoming either in the subsequent meeting or perhaps in the budget process for next year.
Okay. Any other discussion? Supervisor DeHaven?
Just a comment for Supervisor Hess's last comment, and that, I think that's our real goal, is to try to get this discussion back in and through HR, through finance, to the Board, and in budget. Hopefully, we'll have revenue that will support our discussion of these issues within the budget.
Yeah. And I think this is kind of in line with some discussions I've had, one-on-one with a couple of Board members, a desire to get some portions of the budget process started a little earlier, because we do seem to end up getting the process kind of compressed after the first of the year. So I think this is perhaps a good first step in terms of compensation, to be looking at that far in advance of when we're accumulating the budget, so that we've developed a philosophy and priorities and philosophy, so...
Other discussion? Are we ready to vote? Vote then will be on a 2.4% increase. Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Finance Committee report. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Committee meeting was held in the first floor conference room on June 3. All members were present. Items number 3, 4, 5, and 6 were approved under the consent agenda, and I'd so move.
We have a motion that items 3, 4, 5, and 6 be placed under consent. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing on all, Supervisor Ranson.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
Item number 1 was a discussion item, and no action was required. And the discussion was the Northern Shenandoah Valley Substance Abuse Coalition, information for, information only. Item number 2 is the Department of Social Services requests a net general fund supplemental appropriation, the amount of $325,600, of which $335,600 is an increase in state and federal dollars, and $10,000 is a reduction of local funds. The Committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
Who have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion.
I'd like to have more like this.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
Item number 7 is the Public Works Director requests a fiscal year 2016 general fund supplemental appropriation, the amount of $27,000, in order to purchase a vehicle. The Committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Who have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion.
Hearing on all, Supervisor Ranson.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
Item number 8 is the Winchester Regional Airport requests an airport operating fund supplemental appropriation, the amount of $50,000, to cover anticipated cash deficit. A general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $37,550 is also required for the county portion, local funds. The Committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Who have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just want to mention that following reports of this action of the Committee in the newspaper, I had a call from a citizen who recently located in Winchester. I'm not sure whether he actually maintains his residence in North Carolina or whether this is a second home. But anyhow, he's apparently in the consulting business for General Aviation, and he had some questions and suggestions, and I referred him to Rennie Manuel, and apparently they have met and had a discussion. I think he was reasonably satisfied with the way the airport authority is addressing the matter and how they're operating, so just want to mention that.
Yeah, the discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I just wonder if it would be appropriate for the airport authority to kind of mull this, not just this request, but their continuing operation, and kind of come back and, what kind of plans do they have? Because it appears...
That was a result of Finance Committee request that they do something, wasn't it?
They agreed that they would be working on this issue. I mean, what, the big, the bottom line is, they're experiencing dramatic drops in fuel sales, and that's their revenue stream.
I'm expecting some dialogue on the subject.
Good. Okay.
If I'm around here when it's done. Does that, is that, I mean, I thought that's...
That is, that is my memory of the discussion with them, yes. I felt, I felt assured that they were working on a plan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Are we ready to vote? Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
Item number 9 is the county attorney requests a Lake Holiday Sanitary District Fund supplemental appropriation, the amount of $860,000 for the outstanding sanitary district taxes on 557 undeveloped lots to be acquired by Lake Holiday Country Club, Inc. The Committee recommends approval, subject to the following: bond counsel accepting the arrangement; use of the appropriation is limited to the transaction involving the transfer of lots from Lake Holiday Land, Inc. to Lake Holiday Country Club, Inc.; payment of real estate taxes in full; and completion of all transactions by December 31, 2015. The Committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
I'd like to second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor DeHaven and a second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on all, Supervisor Ranson.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thanks.
If we could just, I know we, it was a no-action item, but item number 1, there are citizens in the community that have stepped up and want to do something about what must be a heroin problem in our community. And they have tried to keep us surprised of their actions. I think Supervisor Hess met when their forum, I think he was there. They've gone to great lengths to make sure that, as they try to put together the pieces and see what has happened in other places, and the drug court or whatever it is, it looks like it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of a third, Us Third City and Third Winchester Medical Center. If you have problems with their effort, I think they're asking as loud as they can,
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to follow up on your remarks, I attended the forum that Congresswoman Comstock had here, and what I like about what I hear so far is the fact that not only do they have a program that they're proposing, but they have measurable goals to see if it's going to be effective, and I think that's important anytime you go into a venture like this, so I was impressed with that. I think that's a good point.
Okay. I appreciate you all allowing me to speak to that topic. Does that conclude your report?
Does, sir.
All right. Next, we're in the Development Impact Model Oversight Committee, and I think Mr. Reddy's, or Mr. Lawrence is going to do that, excuse me. You don't look a thing like Mr. Reddy.
The Development Impact Oversight Committee met last month and has forwarded their annual review and recommendations to you, so I would like to go over them real briefly. Just as a reminder, the Development Impact Model is a model that we've had on for about a decade now. We update it annually, and we use it to understand the cost benefits from development. Most often, we see it as part of a rezoning application, but the model's actually designed to be used as far as land use planning, so when we adopt area plans, we can tell you what the balance is and all that, making sure that we're balancing commercial, residential, and industrial land uses as we do our long-range planning. We update it annually to make sure it's continuously accurate. The updating involves looking at figures such as the population, school enrollment, capital improvement plan, projects to values, your budgets from both the school board as well as your county general budget. We also look at service calls, typically sheriff, fire, and rescue service calls. So you can see the types of things we update every year. It's our numbers that could vary every year, so we want to make sure we've got the most recent information in the model. It's most important to recognize that this model looks at the county, so it looks at when you develop a residential structure, what's the impact on the county, what's the benefit. It looks at commercial, residential, or industrial. What we use it most often for is when we do rezoning applications, so we can understand what impacts a residential project may place on the county's capital facilities. And I'll note that the difference with residential as opposed to, the difference at a rezoning stage as opposed to just doing land use planning, is with rezonings, we only look at the capital facility impacts, simply because it helps us understand what applicant should be mitigating to offset their impacts, and state law says we should only be looking at capital, so that's what we use the model for. If we update the model with the input that we receive from the Development Impact Model Oversight Committee, up on the screen you can see the output that we typically would see. So at a rezoning stage, if somebody came in and said they wanted to rezone for residential purposes, what you see in yellow is the projected capital facilities impact that that residential use would place on the county. Single-family figures, $19,681. The townhouse unit would place $13,681 in capital facility impacts on us, and the apartment unit is at $13,880. You can see on the chart to the right is the current figures. The yellow is what we're proposing, the model. If we impact, update the model, that would be the new figures, and you can see there's a slight increase in the impacts on capital facilities as a result of updating this model. With that said, the capital, I'm sorry, the Development Impact Model Oversight Committee has recommended that you accept these critic winput updates and allow staff to use the results, which is, we'll use it during the rezoning process. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that the board approve the update to the...
I think we got questions first. At least I do, if you'd let me. Supervisor Fisher?
Was there any discussion as to when we get a request where the type of dwelling unit comes with a different descriptor as to how that might fit into one of these categories or not fit into one of the categories for, you know, developing the sense of what the capital impact is?
We did not go into a discussion beyond the traditional single-family home, townhouse, and apartment. There's, what we've done historically, if somebody comes in and proffers an age-restricted community, we recognize that that indirectly means they probably won't have any children, so we discount the capital facilities and remove the school impact, but the committee did not specifically talk about any other housing types and any other needs to modify the capital facility output projections. What we've been able to do at the staff level is, as a project comes through, and there's a commitment in the rezoning phase, in a proffer type of house that'll be developed, and we have assurances that we won't get impacts on a particular service, we tend to recognize that through the rezoning process and let you all know that you may be able to discount the capital facility, whether it's fire and rescue or schools. Ninety-nine percent of the time, the only time you would get a discount is if you're age-restricted, because we haven't had a lot of other opportunities to have a proffer that says, "This is exactly what I'm building." So the models, the model, quite honestly, what it says is a single-family unit. It anticipates a house with a cost of about $400,000 when it's assessed value, and so you've got that range. You've got some, you know, less expensive housing, and you've got some more expensive housing, so the $400,000 was the target. Similar units, apartments expects about $150,000 unit. So when we get into the market rate discussions, the model anticipates a home value, but the model says, okay, every apartment, apartments are a good example. We look at 10 years' worth of trends for what students are coming out of apartments in the county, and that's how the model digests and projects what, how many students will come out of a new apartment. So it's not just a one-stop shot. It's looking at trends over the past decade. I don't know if that answers...
We probably can take what we've got and apply it to certain situations where folks think the capital impact's less and say, "This is where you're classified."
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the applicant, if I could, always has the right and the ability to put forth an argument as to why their proffer should be something different. If they have a particular feature to the units they're proposing to construct, and they want to proffer that, they can give an argument as to why they're proffering a different dollar value than what our model projects, and then it's, you know, it's a question of whether we accept their argument.
Questions? I have a couple comments and then just a few queries. Having been around when this thing was developed and knowing that it was being, it is being used for a purpose for which it was not developed, always makes me take a second look at it. I wonder how long it's been since we looked to see what other folks were doing these days, and I wonder when the last time we did a comparison to whatever they're using is kicking out versus whatever we're using is kicking out, since I know, like I said, this was not what it was developed for way back when. Having just made a general statement there with no desire to not support it at this time, where did the extra park land come from? You know?
Because the change in numbers, the Round Hill Fire Station had, we had a, I think, a half acre out there that was considered. We've since removed that from the park allotments. We have acquired the Snowden Bridge site. Up at Snowden Bridge, they have proffered 20-acre site, which the county acquired the end of 2014 through the proffer donation.
And then the school numbers, I know you rely upon them for that, but the anticipated increase in enrollment, I'm not sure about that, especially at the high school level, but I guess if they end up right, we'll find out. And then I noticed that you still have a lesser impact for schools than, you have a lesser impact, and we have to put out more money for schools, and we have a lesser impact for fire and rescue, and we're having to dig in there for money for fire and rescue. So is, is the model doing its job for us, was my question. And yet, when I look at the inputs, I wouldn't have them that high. So...
Do you understand my issue? No, I understand.
Do you have a serve on that? But I don't wish to derail at this time. I just think that perhaps some attention to this if and when the, we get a little more activity in the proffer arena than we're getting right now comes about.
I can...
Getting ahead of it would be better.
I can note that within the past four or five years, we did refresh the model, and actually, as of last year, the consultant who created the model looked at it again and confirmed that it still operates as designed, and that the way we're using it for the capital facilities, the way it's pulling information out of the larger model to give us the capital facility projections is appropriate.
You know, again, it's like, should you say these kinds of things, but of the two jurisdictions I know that looked at it because we adopted it, they chose not to, and they went in another direction, and it'd be curious to see what kind of an audience did the software developer manage to get? How many other people did, we hired him to do it. Now, how many other people did he, was he able to convince this was a good idea? Just curiosity questions for me, that I think once in a while to shake it and figure out what you can find out about it is a good thing. So, and maybe you're doing that, I don't know. I would suggest it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Then, we're ready.
I do have a comment, if you want that before or after the motion.
It's up to you.
I just wanted to negate my three years on the Development Impact Model Committee. There's always been a really good, healthy discussion and strong expressions of opinion on all sides, and this year in particular, I thought the discussion was particularly constructive and particularly positive. And I will make a motion to recommend that the board approve the...
We have a motion to approve the inputs. Is there a second? Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing done. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Inputs are approved. Next is a public hearing on a rezoning, 0315 MBC Elsie, submitted by Gray Wolf Incorporated. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. This rezoning request is one for 2.96 acres of land from a combination of the B3 Industrial Transition District with some pretty restrictive proffers, and the MH1 Mobile Home Community to the B2 Business General District. Of course, that would allow commercial uses on the Route 7 corridor. This is within the Redbird Magisterio District, and the properties are highlighted on the screen to your left, and of course, in your agenda too. And as you can see, the property to the north, in the black outline highlighted in red, is the existing B3 portion, and then just here in the southern part in the purple is the existing mobile home portion of the property. Again, when you combine the two together, that's the 2.96 acres that is reflected on the screen to your left with the black outline. I think we're familiar with the general vicinity of this property. It's very close to the intersection of Millbrook Drive and Blossom Road, the Shandau Hills neighborhood there just to the right of it, and is immediately adjacent to the gas mart across the street from Hilltop House and just to the east of Carlisle and Anderson. Now, the commercial uses are generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. B3 exists today. Again, it's with a very restrictive proffer just for a mobile home sales use. Historically, it was zoned B2 commercially. Again, it's a B2 request here this evening. When we look at those B2 requests, especially along the Route 7 corridor, of course, the transportation impacts are usually what, first or front and center. The applicant's proffer statement contains a variety of things. What it doesn't contain is a generalized development plan, but what the applicant did do is provide this exhibit, that's part of your agenda too, which generally highlights what they anticipate to be developing on the property initially, and it would be a car sales lot. Again, the applicant did not proffer this, but the Planning Commission felt it would be helpful to illustrate the location of the entrances and how the property would be developed initially. So with regards to those impacts in the applicant's proffer statement, all of the uses in the B2 district would be allowed. The applicant has triggered the development conditions based on vehicle trips per day. So as that, as we kind of look at that, the first being 500 vehicle trips per day, the second being 1,500 vehicle trips per day, with a maximum cap on the development of 2,977 vehicle trips per day, and that relates directly to some improvements, in particular, to the three entrances that the applicant will be using for this property, by closing one down, the easternmost first with any development, and utilizing ultimately the western entrance, again, to ensure that the impacts and the access management on Route 7 was dealt with appropriately. The applicant's transportation proffer deals specifically with pedestrian improvements in that general area, in that general corridor. Improvements to Route 7 currently exist. Turning movements at the intersections are relatively sufficient, so the applicant felt that it was appropriate to address the pedestrian accessibility side of things in this location, and conversations have existed historically and in the comp plan with, of course, the many folks that try and cross this portion of the road over to the high school on a daily basis. So the applicant's proffer of $10,000 towards pedestrian improvements is tripped at 500 vehicle trips per day, with a increased proffer of an additional $50,000 should the trips increase to 1,500 vehicle trips per day. Again, the maximum amount of trips that the applicant has committed to is 2,977, and that really relates to the maximum development potential of 2.96 acres in the B2 district. One final proffer that the applicant has included is a fire and rescue contribution based upon building square footage of construction that may occur on the property of 10 cents per square foot. So in evaluating this, the Planning Commission ultimately recommended approval. They evaluated the impacts associated with the request, and particularly the amount, dollar amount in the transportation, excuse me, in the timing of the transportation component, and the commission felt that, again, it was appropriate to recommend approval. You will see that a minor modification to the proffer statement has been reflected, if you will, in what you have from the Planning Commission, and I wanted to point that out, that the date of June 1st, of course, is after the Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval, and that was to reflect some additional comments that VDOT had regarding this application and where things should be within the proffer statement. So ultimately, we're seeking this evening the board's approval of this rezoning request. Mr. Gary Oats of Gray Wolf Engineering is here representing the application. Should you have any questions of him also?
Let's go back to your statement that there were some changes to the proffer statement after the Planning Commission, and go into a little bit more detail, please.
Yes, sir. In the agenda package, and I'll just pull to that while I'm commenting with you, the applicant received a letter from Mr. Smith on June 1st, which, which recommended several things. It recommended some additional language on the final proffer, comment 10, which talked about if the property use is proposed with a higher daily trip generation, then an additional TIA would be needed. At this point, the TIA that was prepared for it.
That means as users materialize, theoretically, there could be a newer TIA requirement based on trip generations.
There could be, however, the use, that was an additional request to VDOT. The applicant did indeed cap the 2,977 vehicle trips per day, and that is reflective of the most intensive use that is permitted in the B2 district today. So that was, the additional request to satisfy VDOT was certainly not questionable and certainly fine. It doesn't necessarily change that there's 2977 as the maximum vehicle trips per day.
The paperwork indicated two numbers, 2799 and 2977. So just to clarify, it's 2977 as the max cap?
2977, and again, that, Mr. Bishop's here too, if we need to call on him, but that's directly tied to the TIA that was done initially for this project request. So there are additional proffers, dealt with some turning lane movement analysis, and again, making sure that some additional languages included to state, again, a 10-foot multi-use trail, some items that were important to VDOT were written according to what VDOT wanted to see. And again, that proffer, those modifications we received on June 1st, as soon as the applicant received that from VDOT.
Other questions, staff?
How come the entrance closest to the existing signal, which is if you're going to Berryville from Winchester, it's the second entrance into there? How come that's going to be closed off?
Yeah. I'll have, take a stab at it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bishop, but the point being is that entrance is closest to the existing signal, and therefore, should people utilize that to do U-turn at the existing signal at Millbrook Drive, where you have a dual left-hand turn lane, that introduces a more dangerous weave of people pulling into Route 7 and quickly trying to get across to make that U-turn. So that was a feature that was recognized as being potentially more unsafe than the entrance further to the west. So that's why that was initially, if you will, the initial entrance to be eliminated. Now, I think that covers it appropriately, but certainly, Mr. Oats, from an engineering perspective, would be able to discuss that a little further if needed.
So the only entrance into the lot would be the first entrance, the westernmost entrance?
Ultimately, and again, that is based upon vehicle trip count. So if you recall, the applicant is allowed to utilize the entrances that exist there today for a certain period of time, and then as soon as the trips hit that 500, then there'll be the closing of the entrance on Eckerd Circle. Then, up to that point there, the only entrance that they could use would be the westernmost one, following that point, should I say?
What about a turning lane? My concern is, because I'll drive home from my office...
My concern is, because I'll drive home from my office on that road every day, and my concern is if you've got people that want to pull into there, whether it's going to be a used car lot or maybe a fast food restaurant, I don't want it backed up all the way Route 7 going east. I'll drive on Berryville Avenue once you get in the city, and it's just miserable because there's no real turning lanes in any of the fast food places or the community stores, and it's just horrible. So what about a turning lane?
Yeah, and of course, that will ultimately be tied to what VDOT may require, but the proffer statement does include that right turn analysis to determine if one is needed. So they would be required to perform that analysis and put one in if necessary. Now, the details behind that, I would, again, recommend that Ms. Oates could talk to you a little bit more about what discussion they may have had specifically with VDOT regarding the need for that particular movement. Suffice to say, it's proffered that we'll have that analysis and put in place if needed.
So if you keep it below 500 trips per day, there's no need for a turning lane?
Well, that would be evaluated right up, any, with any development out there, because the requirement is to analyze the right turn need. If that makes sense, that transportation proffer, which is access, A, access point four, a right turn lane warrant analysis, shall be submitted with any site plan for any site entrances located along Route 7. So I think that gets at the concern is if one is needed, one would be required to be put in.
But it's going to be up to VDOT to make that determination?
That's, that's correct. It's not like the applicant is at this point saying, "We're going to build a right turn lane all the way across the frontage." The one thing that they did proffer, which leads us into that a little bit, is an additional 60-foot of right-of-way dedication to ensure that there's a dedication of 60 feet existing in that area for any widening that may be necessary in the future for Route 7. So that's an additional proffer that also supports improvements to Route 7 in that area. But a right turn specifically today is not proffered by the applicant to say, "I'm putting that in today." But should one be needed, the proffer's there to secure it. The analysis would be done. VDOT will evaluate it and say, "It's needed."
If the maximum cap on the total vehicles per day is at 2,977, in your opinion, is the transportation component of the application acceptable?
Yes, I believe so. As far as it goes, yes. I mean, I think the applicant has chosen to address the pedestrian impacts associated with it, and the applicant's TIA has demonstrated that the improvements that are shown out there are sufficient to accommodate the trips.
And that possible $60,000 for pedestrian improvements, what exactly, what's the pedestrian improvements we're looking at?
To be honest with you, I do not know what exactly that would entail. We do know that the frontage improvements along Route 7 are required. They would put those in anyway, depending on what the money could be leveraged with, may generate additional money, but most likely, it would be for some sort of accommodation to help people get safely along and across Route 7. With the high school being very close, we have a situation out there that, you know, people do try and cross that. We have a very similar situation down at Shandover High School, too, that over time, improvements have been put in place to try and address that safety issue. What the ultimate improvement would be, I do not know. Initially, VDOT is discouraged by the potential to put a crossing, a pedestrian crossing in that location, regardless of whether it would be needed or not. So some project would have to be put in place in the future. What exactly that would entail, I could not tell you right now, but what this does do is it generates some funds to be able to put some improvements in place at such time they're really needed and a project comes forward.
Well, VDOT's forbidding the crosswalk, is my understanding, right?
At this point, they're not in favor of a crosswalk at that location.
Well, what if we said we're going to put in a crosswalk? What's VDOT going to do?
We would work very closely with VDOT because it's a state street, state road, highway, and we would have to meet, and their standards would have to be met completely to make sure it was satisfactorily put in.
So what that means is we're going to have to put in a bridge, most likely of Route 7?
In all honesty, I couldn't tell you exactly what the best solution is. Through the comprehensive planning exercise out there, we've recognized the need to get people across Route 7 for all of the resources that are over there. People do it today. You want to make it as safe as you can. I do feel it's a bigger project out there, that this will have a hand in assisting because there's some money there at some point in the future. But what the best solution is, I certainly couldn't tell you at this time. We just know that there is something to be addressed out in that location.
Do you think it'd be better to use, if we get that $60,000, to use it towards something else instead of this possibility of a pedestrian crosswalk?
If there's a viable project out in that area or a viable improvement, and the money can be used, you know, successfully and with, to actually advance a project, then potentially, I think the pedestrian accommodations is one thing that jumps out in that particular location, given the fact that the Route 7 itself is today a relatively decent standard across that portion of the property, portion of the area. There may well be some additional improvements further downstream in both directions of Route 7, of this site on Route 7, that may jump out in the future. But at this point, with nothing being identified significantly through the applicant's TIA, that was an avenue where we could identify some need.
There's a, there's a line of pretty big trees, I guess. If you're looking at the lot from Route 7, there's a big tree line that separates the lot from the mobile home park. Is the applicant proposing to keep that tree line? Because I would hate for it to all get tore down, and then you've got the mobile home park people that come out on their back porch and are looking at a used car lot or possibly a fast food restaurant or a three-story motel. But what's, what's their position on keeping the trees?
Their position is that they are not going to keep the trees, are not going to commit to keep those trees that exist in that general location. What they have said is that they will put in the required buffer and screening that is there, that would be necessary between the B2 and the residential, a 50-foot buffer, and then, in addition to that, an opaque element such as a berm or a fence and three trees per line of feet. So they will establish, or they have said through this process, that they would establish a new buffer as required by ordinance adjacent to the mobile home park and not maintain the existing vegetation in that area. Now, that is not part of any proffer statement, but that is through the discussions that we've had through this process.
Well, no, why wouldn't it be? This is a rezoning.
Because they haven't committed to do that. They said they did not want to do that, to maintain the existing trees in that location.
But are they committed to do some type of buffer?
That didn't indicate, well, where do you usually pick that up on, the master plan?
No, absolutely, the rezoning. You pick it up on the rezoning. You asked the question. This was part of the original site plan for the professional mobile home dealers, that they had made a commitment to maintain some trees in that area, but that is not something that was carried forward with this application. This would be the time.
So you're saying it should have been there?
Saying it was an opportunity for it to be there.
We'll talk to the applicant in a minute.
Please, that's his, that's his, by the way.
More questions?
What's the proposed use for the, it looks like the back lot, 55A-34A? Do you know?
The portion that was mobile home initially? I think generally speak-
It's this portion right here, if you can see it.
I'll let the applicant speak a little bit more to that, but generally, that's where the stormwater management part of the site would actually have to be located.
More questions, the staff? I think we want to talk to the applicant. Hopefully, the applicant wants to talk to us if he'd come forward.
Thank you.
Did you want to do presentation first and then answer some questions?
Sure, I'll do a brief one. As Mike pointed out, this was B2 historically in the mid to late 90s. They rezoned it to B3 for model home sales. Model home sales, the trip generation is just under 500 trips a day, the same as a used car lot. So that's why I'm not proffering any money at this time, excuse me, the owner is not proffering any money at this time, but they are proffering to do the 60-foot of right-of-way, the 10-foot trail, closing off the entrance, doing the right turn study. All that would be done with the first site plan, no matter what it is, whether it's a used car lot or a pickle stand or anything, it's, that's going to be required. Then, but the owner, or the person buying this, they are planning on putting in a used car lot. That's what is tailored for this, and that was the drawing that Mike had put up. But the person buying it, when he saw the process we're going through just to get the used car lot in there, he preferred not to have a lot of proffered-out uses that would bind him, and he'd have to come back before you again in the future if you decided to do something else with it. So he asked that we look at this and go ahead and address what it could be right up into its full buildout, which would be basically McDonald's with a drive-through, a fast food restaurant, and that's the 2,977. That's the cap of the most highest intensive use we could put on this property and fit it in there. So when we go above 500, we kick in money. Above 500, you're probably looking at some offices, professional offices. When you go above 1,500, that's when you get into retail, restaurants, the much more intensive uses, and that's when we would stop using the Eckerd Lane, which is actually on this property. It's a right-of-way through it, but even though it's on us, we've proffered that we will not use that. All the traffic will be coming out at the furthest point to the west from the light. Just to address the trees, the reason we're not proffering to leave those trees in is, quite frankly, a lot of it's honey locusts and schumak and junk trees. We'll save anything that's good, obviously, because we'd have to pay to replace it, but we want to be able to basically tear out the underbrush, the no-good trees, basically, and put in something more substantial. So we are required to put in a buffer. So whatever business goes in there, it will be screened from the mobile home park. Any buffer planted has to be six-foot tall, it's time of planting. We'll have to have a fence or a berm of some type of solid barrier that you can't see through, along with the vegetation. The parcel that you asked about going across the back, the small one, that's down in the ravine, and it's owned by my client also. It's being rezoned with this because it is laying situated such that it lends itself to be stormwater management, and that parcel has to be the same zoning as what it's being the stormwater management is for. So that's why both of them are being rezoned to B2. By the time you look at the setbacks and the buffers required, we actually have about three-quarters of an acre to develop here, but a lot of it gets taken up. So there's not going to be a lot of impervious area on this three acres. It's going to be a lot of green area. And again, that's because of buffers and setbacks. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
So why weren't the buffers and screenings put in the rezoning?
They're required by ordinance. Any development done would have to be-
Well, we usually see them in the rezoning anyway, I thought.
Well, we could proffer to say, "We'll put in the category B or buffer," but we're required to do that no matter what. It's just like parking size, parking counts, that type of thing, parking spaces. It's a requirement of the site plan. I think what you're thinking about is a lot of times-
Probably confused on something, so if you can help me, do it.
Yeah, in past rezonings, sometimes you have established old growth woods, something that's fairly nice. You have some oaks and maples, something you want to really preserve, and the applicant will come in and say, "We'll preserve this 50-foot strip, 100-foot strip of old growth." But like I said, here we have brush. We've got wild roses. It's just, it needs to be cleaned up.
So I guess I'm just looking for comfort that ordinance will be followed, and I thought it usually appeared in a rezoning, and it didn't. You're saying, "Well, we'd have to follow ordinance," so I guess staff has the gears and the go-power to make you do it. Okay. The, you said mobile home sales. The literature says mobile home community. Does that mean that as currently zoned, you could put mobile homes to be lived in on the property?
Yes, sir.
Or is it proffered to be only sales? Or how do we get there?
Only to be sales and model homes.
So is that by proffer?
Well, actually, in B3, you can't live there. It's commercial. It can only be for sales, retail.
Says from MH1 Mobile Home Community.
Well, that's the small piece in the back that's going to be used for stormwater.
Okay.
That's the piece we need to rezone to B2 so we can utilize it for stormwater.
Okay. Out on 7, no crossovers through there, correct?
Yes, sir.
Would be good if there was, wouldn't it?
It'd be really nice if it was and probably worth a lot more money then. But no, there isn't a crossover. The closest crossover, again, would be-
I guess the thing that's in my mind is, it seems like, it seems like a better use of the property, a better zoning for the property. How can you, how can you make it work? And I guess you explored anything you could do to raise the value of the lot, which everything else, and I guess there isn't anything, but I wish there were.
Well, the property was for sale for just over a year, and basically, everybody that looked at buying it, their use was going to be a B2 use. The B3 didn't fit with any potential user out there. So at some point, this was going to have to come before you to be rezoned.
So how far do you got to go toward Winchester before you can turn around and come back? At the light?
Uh, it's the Sheets.
Sheets, right. I was, I was talking about toward Winchester. Is that, is that, is it on that side?
Winchester would be to the left.
It's on the side of the American Legion.
You're talking about when you're going west to get to this property?
Yeah.
There beside Stafford?
Same side of Sheets or the other side?
Other side.
Other side. So if you're, if you're going toward Winchester, how far do you have to go to Winchester to turn around and come back to get in it if it's on the other side?
You would turn at the Sheets light and do a U-turn to come back west, or, excuse me, turn back, come back east.
Is it on there?
No, it's just to the left.
On Anderson, right here on the left.
Is that what that is, Carlisle? Okay. So pretty good, pretty good distance.
Yes, sir.
I don't think you can take a left, though, at the Sheets to get to that lot. You've got to go down to Martins and make a U-turn.
No, there's a left turn there.
Oh, there is?
Yes. To go down into those-
I almost missed that when I drove there this afternoon.
It's a left to get into the American Legion, I believe.
I know when I approach those kinds of things, I'm never sure I can make a U-turn or not, which is what it boils down to. No sign says you can, no sign says you can't, and you don't know if there's some rule that says you can't. So I personally always wonder about it, but just wish there was a way for everybody's benefit, we could make it a better marketable lot.
Yes, sir.
Can you do that cross through like you suggested?
No, we can't do a crossover because we're too close to the lights. They have to be spaced. That's a VDOT requirement.
Because it's a hassle getting out of there, taking a right, and then if you want to go back into town, you've got to make a U-turn at that light. It's a pain.
Yes, sir. I agree.
So you're saying probably your highest, best use is going to be a car lot?
It's probably going to be a car lot. It's probably going to be some type of business that doesn't rely on traffic coming in at peak hours.
I think a fast food restaurant would be good there. I get tired of driving into-
Certainly a number of things that could go there that would be a disaster. Anyway. Other questions, the applicant? Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
We're now conducting a public hearing on a rezoning 03-15 MBC LC submitted by Gray Wolf Incorporated to rezone 2.96 plus or minus acres as follows. Point 60 plus or minus acres from MH1 Mobile Home Community District to B2 General Business District with proffers and 2.36 acres plus or minus from B3 Industrial Transition District to B2 General Business District with proffers. The properties are located on the south side of Route 7, approximately three-quarters miles east of Winchester at Eckerd Circle, and are identified by property identification numbers 55-A-34 and 55-A-34A in the Red Bud Magisterial District. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for this rezoning? If so, please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and let me know your comments to three minutes, please. Is there anyone? Seeing no one, closed public hearing. This is Red Bud. Means you get to make the motion, one way or the other.
I personally would like to see that, that proffered money. I mean, I personally like to see that go towards something we could use.
That is a question I wanted to ask you. Could you come back up? I think what he may be saying is, is the developer locked in to the 60 being used for pedestrian improvements, or could it be any improvements on Route 7?
Well, currently, it is written as locked in on the pedestrian improvements based on the- on the studies that were out there, land use plan. However, if it's the board's desire, it could be placed just for general transportation improvements on Route 7.
We think that would be acceptable.
Yes, sir.
Is that your question?
That's my question, and he answered it.
Okay.
I don't think VDOT's ever going to allow a crosswalk across Route 7 and allow children, schoolchildren, to walk across there. I don't see that ever happening. So the only way you're ever going to get a crosswalk over Route 7 is you're going to have to build a bridge, and are we in any position that that's likely going to happen in the near future?
So staff, the query from Supervisor Ranson is clear, the applicant says it would be acceptable, is there a path for us to accomplish that? And how would that happen?
Yes, sir, what we would do is have the applicant and representative here just note on the proffer statement this evening and sign up, sign up on that with that modification, that it's for general transportation improvements in the Route 7 corridor. Just simply adding that statement to the existing proffer statement, signing off on it would be appropriate.
Okay, so you have that option if you decide to take it.
All right, well, I move to approve the rezoning of that lot, to, both of them, to B2 General Business, and that the proffered amount be used for general highway funds.
Okay, everyone understand the motion? There's a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second with Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing none, Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. See, now we're in a discussion of farm breweries and distilleries in the RA Rural Areas Zoning District, are there samples?
Unfortunately, not tonight, I'm sorry.
Thought I'd ask.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of the board. As you stated, this is a revision to the farm winery text to update it to include farm breweries as well as distilleries, both as permitted uses in the RA, which is the Rural Areas Zoning District, and these changes are pursuant to the Code of Virginia. So what this states, really, there's a, some new and revised definitions that go with the uses, there's the addition of onsite sales and tasting during regular business hours for the uses, kitchen and catering activities related to events for the business. We also did remove the site plan requirement and added in instead an illustrative sketch plan, which is a little, it's a little more minor than a traditional site plan. And there's also a revision to the special events allowance to decrease the number of people allowed onsite without a festival permit from 150 to 100, to be more consistent with the county code.
Before you, are you going to leave this page?
I can go back.
The first page said according to Code of Virginia.
Yes.
Are all of these according to Code of Virginia, or are these supplemental to that, Frederick County's version?
There's, there's kind of a hybrid. What the state code requires, flip to the state code text in my ordinance. Under the Code of Virginia, for the allowance for the wineries, breweries, and distilleries, is there certain activities that we, that we're not supposed to limit, which, that's first, the harvesting of agricultural products, allowances for onsite tastings, storage of materials, and then sale of uses or products associated with them. We're often, we're allowed to, though, regulate other things such as food preparation, lot size, and events. So what we've done is included, cut the state code allowances for what we need to allow them to do, and then we've also added in allowances for them to serve food on sites, more appetizers, not full restaurant facilities, and we've also restricted the number of people allowed for events, such as wedding receptions, parties, things like that.
I was just trying to make sure it was abundantly clear to me which things the code made us do, and which things were we doing because we thought it was a good idea.
Right.
Looks like most of these are the ones that we think would be a good idea.
Correct, with the exception, the exception, the second bullet, which is the onsite sales, tastings during regular business hours, that's a state code requirement, the kitchen and catering activities is also a state code requirement, however, and the definitions are also in line with the state code. Our requirements, however, are the illustrative sketch plan and the number of people.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes.
The fact that we're restricting the type of food, or the, or the degree of-
Yes.
That's ours, that's not state code, is it?
Correct, that's more so to, to keep it, the actual full-blown food sales to more an event-type facility so it doesn't turn into a restaurant, where breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
I'm not sure why we'd have a problem with that, is where I'm, where I'm thinking. It seems pretty restrictive to me compared to how-
Right, it was more so since we already-
How the jurisdictions in other states handle these things. And then the only other question, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but we're saying 100 by right, but they could apply for an annual festival permit to get the 150, correct?
Correct, if it's a, if it's a use that feels that they're going to have a number of events that are going to exceed the 100, it would, it would be best for them to come in for an annual permit, yeah.
Well, no, the reason I had questions is because the stuff I read says that the people who are enjoying their right under the code to do these activities are at war with the people who live next to them and don't want it, and so I'm trying to think ahead about what's going to happen to us. I haven't become aware of any problems, but if it's, if it's going elsewhere, it's probably headed here. So that's, that's why I was asking the questions, go ahead.
Chairman, to go to that point, I've noticed that we talked before about festival permits, that anything over 100, you have to get a festival permit, but we'd also talked about making that a conditional use permit because of the notification process that would take place. Would that be required with this for the reduction of 150 to 100? Would we get in that, I know we haven't gone through that process yet, but that also seems, it goes to that point, it's a little restrictive, it's 150 because a wedding party may have more than 150 people, or 100 people that want to be there, the festival permit would allow them up to what number, any number?
Is that, for a little clarity for myself, I think, I think that was associated with the last festival permit that you did see, possibly instead of doing a festival permit, coming back in with a conditional use permit for commercial outdoor recreation, I believe.
I'm not trying to put that in the mix, but I'm trying to figure out if, does a festival permit allow, how many does it allow? More than 150?
Mr. Chairman, there's no limit on the festival permit, it's whatever limit the board chooses to impose. It's that a festival permit is not required at all for an event with 100 or fewer.
Right.
Anything over that, then it comes to the board for what the board sees as most appropriate.
Right, the 150 was previously adopted in the farm winery text, so what we're doing is dropping that down to be consistent with the county code for festival permits, so the 150 doesn't mean anything, as opposed to state code, we're just bringing it down for county code purposes.
Now, I think I interrupted you, just so please proceed with your presentation.
I was really just going to wrap it up, just to say that the DRC discussed this back at their April meeting, and then the Planning Commission at their May 20th meeting, so they forwarded it on to the board for further discussion and seeking where this is, if it's ready to go forward to public hearing.
And I know for me, these kinds of things, when the call comes either by the person who wants to do it or the person who doesn't want it to happen, if I say that's under the Code of Virginia and enabled, and then they come back and say, "Well, what my real problem or my complaint is, something that we had authority over," it makes it very difficult for me to make sure that I don't try to pass the buck to Richmond when it belongs with us, and so that's really the reason I wanted to know, because it looks like the empowerment to have these type of facilities in the RA area was, was abundantly clearly made by the legislature. So I wanted to make sure I knew what part we were adding to it.
So 100, 150, we have the authority over that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm a little unclear, let's take Valerie Hill, for instance, the winery. Normally, they don't have to have a permit to go, for people to go there and-
Correct, if, if it's just their daily operation, and they're running, you know, tastings and having small-scale things on the property, they would not need a festival permit, however-
If they keep it 100 or less.
100 or less, correct.
If they say, "Hey, we're having a wine festival on a Saturday."
Right, if they're having more than 100 people, more than 100 people on the property, they should be coming in for a festival permit.
So the same will apply to a brewery?
Yes, sir.
Does the, does the additional 50 people really make a difference?
It's to eliminate conflict. It's to eliminate conflict between zoning ordinance and festival.
We were just trying to bring, align one ordinance with another.
Okay. Is this one of those cases where we've repeated what the code says instead of just saying, refer to the code? You know, we've had discussions about, as the code changes, when it's appropriate to refer to it versus to try to say what it says and then get, get caught when an update happens.
I guess the code, I mean, since we've added more things in to kind of try to cover all of our bases, because we traditionally know other activities occur with these types of uses, such, such as weddings and things like that, so that's why we added the extra conditions, I mean-
What I'm wondering is if what was here were only the things we added, and then the rest of it was per, per Virginia code, would that not make it clear to folks like me which part was which?
We definitely could, could do that, the definitions-
Code of Virginia here?
On a couple of points, there are.
I would, I would suggest you try to eliminate that by, by letting people, let the code guide them, and it never has to be changed.
If we, if we do go strictly, though, with the Code of Virginia allowances, that's going to kick out such as the events on the properties, receptions, things like that, though. So then that would, that would mean they would have to come in for a separate, such a conditional use permit.
Just trying to make it simpler, not more complicated.
Mr. Chairman.
Who's talking?
Yes, sir.
If I may, where we're at on this is that the General Assembly decided that there are certain uses that they want to have all localities allow in rural areas as part of agritourism, and they've slowly, through time, expanded that, originally it was wineries, then it, then they added the farm breweries, and now they've added the farm distilleries. So what we have to do is find a way to make sure that our ordinance allows those uses. What the General Assembly has further said, though, is that we can impose certain reasonable limits on those uses. So our challenge here is to find a way to put in our code the allowance of these uses, but then also put in such appropriate limits that are fitting for Frederick County. So what is before the board tonight is an attempt to do so. Certainly, I think if, if appropriate, if it's the board's desire, staff can take this back, make some modifications to it to, we'll look at it to remove things that are redundant of the state code that need not be there, but at the end of the day, if we don't include the additional things that Mrs. Perkins has identified as local items, then what we would end up precisely in that situation where we wouldn't be able to, we would just simply have these uses without any guidelines to govern them, so we need to-
That's more than satisfactory to me.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I may ask, for my own edification, can you describe what an illustrative sketch plan is? How's that different from a site plan or-
I'll actually go over that in the next agenda item as well. An illustrative sketch plan, it's, it's really just a more basic document that the, the property owner would be able to prepare themselves, they're not going to need an engineer, it'll keep the cost down, they could virtually take their plat, draw on their buildings, their parking lots, their entrances, with staff's help to ensure that they're meeting, meeting the requirements, and it would be approved document and filed. So just, it's an overall sketch or layout.
Artist rendition of what this building is going to look like in the end, it's just a matter of location, size, those types of things.
Wears boxes and lines.
That's all I needed, now, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I guess the only other comment I'd make is, is, and I appreciate the effort that you've, you've gone to, but I'm not sure, trying to find that balance between let them do what they want to do, I've, I've been to a number of these things where they have recreational, family-type recreational activities on the property as well, they have full food service, if, if, a facility's going to be a destination, and eventually you're hoping to attract folks from a distance even, they really ought to be able to get something other than finger food or hors d'oeuvres, in my view, and I know that finding the balance between permitting their freedom to do what they feel their clientele is, is looking for, and not being an imposition to adjoining properties is, is a little tricky. It seems very restrictive to me.
It was, I guess that was more trying to find a balance between, because we currently have a conditional use permit option for a full-scale restaurant in the RA, but then giving them the ability by right to do the same thing that someone else would have to get a CUP for.
Change the other one.
Maybe square footage.
A free-for-all and-
I mean, and, I mean-
Market decide, I mean, there's a big demand for these farm breweries out there, I think, almost as, as much as the wineries, and if you could have a lot of people come here from throughout the Commonwealth, and they want certain foods, have it.
That's, now, as the prerogative of the board, what restrictions they want to have on this or not.
Well, I might suggest you might give some thought, because you all are very clever and you do this well, but maybe there's a way to keep it from being so large that it creates the kind of problems you're concerned about, I mean, maybe you could limit seating or, you know, capacity, square footage. I, I would be surprised if we don't see these with, with the wineries, the breweries, and the distilleries, and outdoor recreational activities, et cetera, as well, which, I mean, I don't think you're going to want to restrict hiking paths on the farm and so forth, I mean-
Right, it's just-
Very creative, I have great confidence.
We try to find a balance between what's, what's appropriate, and you have to understand the neighbors that are going to be adjacent to the use, and if it's a heavily-used, you know, operation, it's going to have a lot of impacts on the neighbors with people in and out, hours of operations, things like that, so.
My exposure's limited, but, you know, for the most part, there, there are several hundred-acre establishments, so there, there is some built-in buffer, most of them are attempting to grow a portion of their, the products they need to do their distilling or wine.
The newer ones that we're seeing, though, are on properties less than 20 acres, so they're not, they don't have quite the buffers that you see a lot of the larger operations on.
Trust your judgment.
And if I may, I agree, because right now, there's a facility being built, and I think it's only 17 acres, that, it seems like a very large building, and that could impact the neighbors, although there are no real neighbors on either side of that right now, but I agree, I'd like to know what that balance is between letting them do what they want to do so it becomes a tourist attraction or destination, and also be mindful of the fact that we have neighbors, you know, out in Hollywood, out in the middle of Gainesboro. But certainly, make it viable for the owner to make a living, or make it viable as a business, so I'm not sure how we, like I say, staff's very creative, and maybe just coming back with some examples of what's out there.
It's not going to go away.
No.
I saw a tour bus one time go into one of these, and I didn't know if the guy's trees or the tour bus was going to get the worst end of it, that doesn't speak to the roads that you use to get there, and a tour bus just doesn't fit on them.
Mr. Chairman, just a distinction that comes to mind, if we allow these distilleries under these conditions, and they desire to do something more like a full-service restaurant or something like that, they could come in for a CUP in addition to what they're allowed to do under this distillery, so there, there, there would be ways to accomplish those broader spectrum kind of uses on the property that wouldn't necessarily be automatically granted under this.
And that, that addresses the issue of voters, or neighbors being notified, then, whereas if it's by right, it's going to happen whether the people object or not, whereas the process like this, CUP, would require the proper notification.
Correct, by limiting it to the by-right uses, then you're cutting out any kind of the restaurant uses, any, any- the restaurant uses, any, any larger events such as receptions and things like that.
Cutting it out as far as it being automatic.
Correct. By right, it would be limited to the state code allowances, and then anything that they wanted to do over, be, over and beyond could be on a case-by-case basis through the board's CUP.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, there's only, there's one issue there, though, is the state code doesn't make, doesn't provide for allowances. It just simply says that these are allowed uses subject to local regulation. So, we'd have to come up with some guidelines.
I have no fault with what's being proposed, and I can probably get there based on a requirement for conditional use permit or that kind of an approach to go further. It's just we're constantly adding more steps for folks. If there's a way that we can minimize that, I would support that direction.
Yeah. That was kind of the direction we were trying to go.
Okay. Other discussion, in regards to what I said, I don't have any problems with the public hearing either. I just wanted to make it abundantly clear which things do we have the ability to change and which things we don't, so that when, when it comes, because it will, I know how to answer the question. And that was really all I wanted to know. I, I don't know if we get it right the first time. I guess practice will tell.
Chairman, would it be prudent to have staff, before this goes to public hearing, and I really don't have a, a real problem with it, but several issues have been raised, but it'd be prudent to have staff go back and look and see about if, in fact, they wanted to make it a different type of venue, which, with meals, what process that would entail, before we go to a public hearing with the way it is?
We'll leave that up to staff to advise us what they feel. We try to provide discussion so that it's of use to you. I don't know if you heard something that made sense, or you'd say, "Well, now that really doesn't make sense to us. It's time to speak up."
If, if I can comment real quickly, one thing we've learned is the way these, these are farm breweries and farm wineries, what that means is you have to grow the product on the property. And what we've learned from Valerie Hill is a good example, is it takes a number of years, and I think the target was five years, before you're actually producing on-site. So, the way the ordinance is being proposed is establish your farm activity, take the five years, get a healthy crop, make sure that's what you want. And if it, if it's thriving at that point, the way the ordinance is drafted and exists with CUPs is you can get a CUP for that restaurant five, you know, basically five years after you've already established your, your farm operation. I think one of the challenges we get into is we got to make sure that, state code says that these farm operations are by right. We've got to make sure that we just don't allow someone to operate a restaurant by right and forget about, forget about that farm operation component. And, you know, it's, it's, it's part of a growing pains, but once, once that farm establishes its brewery or winery, we, we as a community will know whether it's acceptable. So, if they expand the operation to the point where they went to a restaurant, the CUP becomes, I don't want to say it's easy, but everybody already sees what's happening out there. You go through the public hearing process, and you secure that restaurant right. You don't want to give a restaurant right if the farm doesn't exist, because then you've conflicted with the state code. So, just food for thought as we go through.
Just, just a comment. I, I agree, and it's a good point. You, you could produce your first crop of hops in less than six months.
I don't believe you have to produce all, 100% of all the material that you're going to use on that either. So, but, but I do agree that certainly not make it by right, but find a method and maybe be cognizant of that method before we move forward with making a decision.
And, and staff could also go back, look at the ordinance. We could come up with a few different options and go over them with, with the board at some further point to see what, what you would be more comfortable with, whether it be existing as, stating what's in the state code.
Let's try this. Again, I don't have any problem with you going to public hearing. I just don't want to go to a public hearing on items that the state code says you have to do. Take those out of there or some, so I don't have to defend something that I can't really have anything to do with. But, once that, I'm ready to public hearing, but if you're not ready to public hearing, then, then let's, let's send it to, back with staff with some specifics. We talk generally, but I'm not sure I could tell them what to do about what I heard. So, let's, let's get where we want to go here.
I'm okay with going to public hearing if we think that the issues that have been raised about not allowing restaurants as a by-right use, if, in fact, we don't have to come back and redo something that we're going to do with the public hearing and move forward from there. I, I don't know if you can make that assurance or not, but...
I don't know. Mr. Chairman, I think the issue, I, I think this is okay the way staff's presented it. I think the challenges are going to be with that restrictions, you're going to have a commercialization of the rural areas, and then the rural areas aren't the rural areas anymore. And, you know, the, the way things change and the smaller tracks, then you, that's where the conflicts start coming. If it was 200, 300 acres, well, you've got plenty of natural buffer. And I have no doubt that whatever we pass will come back later and say, "Gee, what do we do that for? Let's tweak this a little bit." And, so, I don't have any problem with what we're trying to do. I think the restrictions are reasonable at this point.
That's why we did, we also put an acreage limit back when we adopted the farm wineries for sites to be able to have the special events. We set it 10 acres and above.
Well, let's try a motion either to let staff do some work or go to public hearing.
I'd like to suggest we go to public hearing with the understanding that staff is going to pull out the state code issues.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. How do you, how do you, how do you pull that state code issues? You gotta, you almost have to refer to some state code issues.
You would refer to them.
We would reference the state code mandate that talks about the wineries, distillers, and breweries, and then we would tack on the county requirements underneath that.
Any other discussion? Hearing attendants in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Off to public hearing. Next is a discussion of site plan revisions and additions to the zoning ordinance. You're up again.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. These are proposed revisions to Part 802 of the zoning ordinance. This is a section that covers site plans. What this does, it's some text updates to include minor site plans as well as provisions for illustrative sketch plans. Now, minor site plans have commonly been submitted and approved by the county. However, that term and the requirements for these plans has never been codified. Now, illustrative sketch plans being proposed, these are the ones that we discussed earlier would be applicable to the brew, to the agricultural businesses such as the wineries, breweries, and distilleries. It would also, it could, they could also be applied to conditional use permits that may not need a full-blown engineered site plan. So, a minor site plan is a engineered plan that would constitute a revision that increases an existing structure area by 20% or less and does not exceed 5,000 square feet of disturbed area. Now, this, this policy has been in effect for a number of years. It's just never been codified. So, these, the 20%, not to exceed 5,000, it's not a new concept. The minor site plans include a reduced submission guidelines, which are proposed in the text, and they also have a reduced fee, which is already included in the current adopted fee schedule. Now, the illustrative sketch plans would not need to be sealed by a licensed professional. It would really just be the property owner working with staff to complete the exercise, and there's no fees associated with that. So, the DRC reviewed this at their April meeting and then the Planning Commission on May 20. And tonight, we're seeking direction from the board as to whether this is ready for public hearing. We're glad to answer any questions.
Questions? For me, sketch plans accepted by staff is really a staff question. Do they give you what you need to do your jobs and make sure that what got approved happened was enough specificity? And I kind of would follow your lead myself.
Right. It's, it's a, it's a really basic document that would show the minimal improvements that, that they would need to have, such as their building location, their parking lot, their entrance. We would...
Sketch plans have squiggly lines, and if you thought the squiggly line was there and they said, "No, it was there," it's more of a, is it a problem for you all than, than I think for the board? But, that's just my opinion.
Right. It's definitely not the same level of comfort that you would have with an engineered site plan.
It is a convenience for the public that can be tolerated, if you all say it can be, I think.
Right. There, at the committee level, when we originally started the text discussion, we had, well, actually, I'll go back. Currently, as adopted, the farm winery text has a minor site plan requirement. It's a requirement that they submit an engineered site plan. When we went back to the Planning Commission with the updated text for breweries, and also the Development Review and Regulations Committee felt that the requirement for an engineered site plan would be too much of a burden for those types of uses due to the cost of them. So, that's how we came to the sketch plan.
I wonder how many times you've brought us stuff with a sketch plan that was obviously a sketch. That was enough, but it wasn't codified, if it got right down to it, and you're fixing that. I can't help but wonder if that's not part of what you're saying, because I never saw one that wasn't before us. It didn't look okay to me.
I guess usually the documents that come before you are engineered plans unless it's say, say a home business.
I'm only talking to the ones that were sketches.
Usually, they're, they're like a generalized development plan and a master development plan. Those are always engineer sealed documents. Same, the only time you would get a basic sketch at this time would be something drawn, drawn by a property owner for conditional use permit, such as a home occupation. So, that would be kind, kind of the level that you would, that we would see with the illustrative sketches. It would be a very basic document, but it would give us a little more assurance of what they're going to do, and it would help them understand what's expected of them without the, the full-blown document being certified by an engineer.
Questions to staff?
Mr. Chairman, right now, a minor site plan, what's the minimum amount that would cost someone to do something like, to run it through the process?
The county fee is $500.
I just wonder if it wouldn't be some value to even a sketch plan, because it's going to take staff's time, some minimal value, it'd be worth to the county, because it is going to take staff's time, even though it doesn't have to be an engineered plan. I'd put them a minimum amount on there, because they, they could continue to come back to staff and revise and revise. So, just a thought.
Yes, sir.
Other comments? Questions? Ready for public hearing?
Before you do, any, any feedback from staff, though, on a fee?
Quite honestly, we, we've done some sketch plans with some of the applicants on CUPs and some other, other sites. It really doesn't take much staff time, because we're meeting with people on a daily basis anyway that doesn't have, it's part of customer service. So, if somebody comes in and asks, "Say, I'd like to do this on my property," we show them how to do something on their property. So, it's, I, I don't think we need a fee associated with the illustrative sketch plan. It's, it's less than an hour discussion with someone to explain the process, and I think it's customer service. I don't think it's something...
And I would agree, but I just didn't know how much time that would take. So, if you're comfortable with that, I'm comfortable.
I'm fine.
Is it ready for public hearing?
Moving forward.
Public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to forward public hearing. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing attendants in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Off to public hearing. Board liaison reports, are there any? Hearing, and then we come to the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Are there any citizens here who would like to address the board on any topic? If so, please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. Sean Graber from the Back Creek District, 456 Brule Road. I would call my supervisor here and ask him this question. I know it's not a question and answer period, so I'll make a comment. But, it's been over a year and my phone still hasn't rang, so I'll make my comment. My comment is this, when is enough enough? I, I see in the Winchester store, brought examples for each of the last three months where this board has been spending money. In fact, we spent some money tonight that really wasn't budgeted for the airport. I'll start with Fire and Rescue Department that we gave some additional money to back in April. Had a friend of mine that went to the fire chief and laid out a plan to him about the overtime last year, about last June, last July, so about a year ago, and showed him a way where he could save well over $500,000, which would have made, so we wouldn't have had to spend that additional money here in April. And he also went to his Board of Supervisor representative, which is representative here tonight, and didn't get any action. So, it cost the taxpayers, well, considerable amount of money to cover that. That was in April. We come to tonight, we see the regional airport, and in a small business, when you have reduction in, in usage, you have to cut staff, you have to cut maybe some equipment. But, you make the cuts necessary. But, I see that we, we went back and spent some more money. It's kind of like when you ask an alcoholic, "When is enough enough?" Well, it's always the next beer. It seems almost with this local board, it seems enough is enough. Well, we'll, we'll spend a little bit more money on this project, and, and then we'll go on to the next one. The last concern that I have is the fourth high school. When is enough enough? It's changed quite a bit this year. It went from a 1,200-person school to a 1,700-person school. There's been a lot of revisions here. I haven't seen any public hearings on it. It would appear to me that with the middle school that we're building right now and a proposed high school, we're going to have a pretty significant tax increase to pay for these things. And it would be very nice if the public, who is going to be having to pay for this, is at least, has a little input on what it's going to cost. I haven't seen a public hearing or heard one advertised, so maybe you guys can enlighten me on that. But, I kind of think of it like this. If we have a, a budget and it's passed, and we don't make anyone stick to it... About all it's good for is trash can. Just some thoughts. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, close the public citizen comment portion of the meeting. Are there any Board of Supervisors' comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say that I appreciate Mr. Graber's comments, but again, I think it's important for all citizens to avail themselves of all the available information that's available before they make comments that might not be accurate. Thank you.
Any other Board of Supervisors' comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Governor Fisher?
The airport's been an economic development tool for many, many, many years, and it's been, to benefit of the, the localities that support it, to be self-sufficient. But, with that knowing the full nature of the operation of the airport, what it does, and its economic development impact, this really isn't anything that should have come out of a surprise to folks that we may have to supplement some of the income. The authority is working on some issues, as you know, trying to improve that. But, as a major economic development tool for our community, it's a very important asset, and some of that benefit is very intangible. Thank you.
Other Board of Supervisors' comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make note of an information item that was in the Finance Committee report, that the Government Finance Officers Association has awarded the county the award for outstanding achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the June 30, 2014 Comprehensive Annual Report, and that's the 29th consecutive year that the county has received this. 29?
29. With accent on the 29. Anything else?
Chairman, move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Supervisor DeHaven. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Attendents in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Meeting adjourned.